Welcome to the October 10, 2023 City Council Work Session. I'd like to now turn it over to City Manager Benda to walk us through the Agenda Overview.
Thank you, Mayor. Vice Mayor, Members of City Council, good afternoon. Today's work session, we have a couple items that a couple of our City Council members had asked city staff to brief them upon. Donna Witt, our Chief Financial Officer, will engage you on nonprofit organizations and the funding process associated with them. Also, Gayn Elhart, our Public Works Director, she, there's questions about how we dispose of hazardous materials and we'll engage on that. There's a bid process that you've done before and it's usually scripted and that's located under the Work Session Agenda Items. And later this evening, that same bid that's being opened here during Work Session will be kind of positioned in or voted upon later tonight if that's the will of council. We have one business item briefing and some, we'll go through roll call and then one closed session item. So with that, Mayor, turn it back to you.
Thank you so much. Moving on to our Work Session Agenda Items. Nonprofit organization funding process, Ms. Donna Witt.
Thank you. So I was asked to do kind of an overview of how we do, maybe, there we go, how we fund nonprofits and why we fund nonprofits. And so typically, these are done in our external service providers and they're broken down between mandated, contractual, and discretionary. And that's where the majority of our nonprofit funding is done. But we also have some other. So we'll just kind of walk through these and happy to answer any questions that you might have. So our external service providers that are mandated, it's actually by state code that these organizations provide services for us. So the Blue Ridge Regional Jail Authority, the Central Virginia Planning District Commission, Horizon Behavioral Health, and the Lynchburg Health Department. And by these state codes, there's really not other organizations to be able to provide these services. So we contract with them for these mandated services. And then under contractual, these are mandated services that, some of them we can put out an RFP for to, for a different person possibly to provide the services. But again, we have contracts with these organizations to provide specific services. So the Regional Radio Board, which oversees our regional radio system for emergency services, that is a regional authority. We're the largest in that organization and kind of rule that contract with the surrounding counties. The Lynchburg Humane Society operates a state-required animal shelter. So it is something that we used to do in-house and then when they built their new facilities, we joined with them and have a contract for them because we are required by state code to have a service provided for the dogs that the animal warden picks up. And so we, the Lynchburg Humane Society provides that service for us. The Southern Memorial Association oversees the operations of the Old City Cemetery. The cemetery is owned by the city, but this, and Public Works mows the grass, but we do have this organization that oversees the other operations of the cemetery. And then the Virginia Cooperative Extension Service, this provides assistance and information concerning federal and state disaster relief programs. And again, these are all done by a contractual agreement. Our discretionary, the way we've kind of ended up with the ones we have. So requests for funding are submitted to the city manager or to the Budget Office staff and the city manager determines the level of funding to be included in his proposed budget. So back in the day, a number of years ago, probably 15, if I had to guess, we used to actually send out a letter to local nonprofits and ask them if they wanted to submit a proposal to City Council. And we've kind of gotten away from that. We went into a recession at one point and then we just kind of got away from it. So the ones that are left are the ones that have really been here for quite a long time. But through the budget deliberations, City Council can adjust these appropriations from what the city manager has proposed. State code requires a supermajority vote for some of these, but not all. So for simplicity, we've kind of lumped them together in the resolution and just requested a majority vote. However, council can pull any one of them out to be voted on separately. So there's nothing that says you have to do it this way. We've kind of changed our process and done that through simplicity's sake because we had, at one point, when Joan Foster was mayor, the organization she works for, the Humankind, thank you. Yeah, so, yeah. And so that was required a supermajority and we pulled it out separately because she needed to not vote on that. So through the years, these have kind of changed a little bit, but this is where we've ended up. And then we have other. So other nonprofits are contracted for, to provide cities, for, to provide service for the city. Most of these are done through an RFP process, a request for proposal, or a memorandum of understanding. And I just put a couple of examples here. One is the Lynchburg Regional Business Alliance and it's funded in the Office of Economic Development and Tourism by an MOU signed January of 2022 to remain in effect until terminated by either party. So there is an agreement there. There's a scope of services that they are to provide, but at any time, council can vote by majority to not fund that organization. So it is subject to appropriation on an annual basis by City Council. The All One Health provides services for the Employee Assistance Program and it's, it's funded in non-departmental, but this is a contracted service and it is currently out for an RFP. So this just gives you a couple of examples. There's really, besides these two, there's not anything big in there that's provided by nonprofit organizations to provide services to the city. It's, it's pretty limited. But anytime there is an RFP out and there's a nonprofit that can provide that service, they certainly can submit a proposal to be selected and reviewed within the others that are selected. So it's pretty easy, actually. So any questions? That's really what I have.
Councilwoman Hugson?
Maybe just some clarification. You know, the beginning of it, you have the external service providers mandated. Although the service is mandated, the amount is not mandated.
That's correct. The amount is not mandated. Generally, those organizations provide us with their budget request.
With their request, yep. The other, I know that you have on there with regarding going down the list, but external service providers discretionary and what has been the normal precedence being collegial that if an individual council member wishes to pull one of them, it's usually not voted on as a majority to pull it, but it's usually granted that request just on a collegial basis to say, hey, I'd like to vote on that one separately. The question is divided and then that would go on there. I think that's all that I had. And back to what you had mentioned before about the process, just years ago, as Ms. Witt mentioned, is people used to come and ask for funds and kind of realize that that's probably not the place of city government to tax one group and give it away to your favorite nonprofit. Plus, there were other items and abilities through the CDBG grants that they could, you know, apply for and be awarded. So that we removed most of them from, as external service providers. Now with the Humane Society, is there still a contribution? Because what we did is paid for the further good junk into the animal shelter. That kind of paid for a lot of the services going forward, correct?
That's correct. We do have an agreement with the Humane Society. State code does require that we have a service for the animals that the animal warden picks up, specifically dogs. But we, we, the animals, the Humane Society does provide a larger scope of services for the citizens of Lynchburg.
Thank you.
Was that my mic that did that? The question that I have is, the, one is, can we, are we able to see that MOU with the Lynchburg Regional Business Alliance? Is that something that can be emailed to us? I'd be curious to take a look at that and see what we're, what we're paying for and how much we're paying for it.
Sure.
And then also, where does the Downtown Lynchburg Association fall on this? Because I don't see that anywhere on the...
We only provided funding to the DLA in fiscal year 2023, I believe, and we gave them, council appropriated $50,000 to provide specific funding for them to do specific events.
But we have an employee that's the executive director, but that's actually a city employee, right?
Yes, she's in the community development budget.
So, so it's in the community development budget, but it's essentially a position that's on loan to another entity, right?
That's how, from the beginning, that when, I don't know, when the original agreement was done, whatever time period, but that expectation. The expectation was that the city would pay for that position and has paid for it since its inception.
So I mean, I'm just kind of wondering how that's not, I know it's a different kind of contribution, like a, maybe like an in-kind contribution versus a financial contribution, but that is a nonprofit and we are providing a substantial amount to that in the form of paying benefits for a single employee. You know what I mean?
I just didn't look at it that way. Since she is an employee of the city, we don't give a, she runs that organization, but we don't give a specific amount of money other than providing the staff to lead that organization.
Yeah, but I mean, I would...
But that would be, that would fall under other.
Yeah, I would just think that maybe we need to make sure we're separating that in the budget as well, just because I think we should be crystal clear about where we're sending our tax dollars, even if it's in the form of a in-kind contribution.
We can do that.
Thank you very much, Ms. Witt. All right, moving on. Review Hazardous Materials Disposal Program, Ms. Gayn Elhart.
Good afternoon, City Council.
Hello.
Yes, we do offer household hazardous waste and electronic recycling. We offer that actually three times per year, in April, June, and October. It's for residents only, household residents and apartments. This is not for businesses. We have had people show up with 55-gallon drums of oil and paint. We do not accept those items from businesses. So just want to be clear about that. It serves about 600 to 700 residents annually, so that's split between the three dates. That is who it serves. And we do partner with Amherst and Campbell Counties. They asked the city manager at the time, could they go in on our household hazardous waste? We did accept that waste. They give a voucher or they handle it and then we bill them for the cost of that, including our city staff as well as cost of disposal. So we are doing that as being a regional partner, basically. Household hazardous waste is regulated and so it is regulated by both EPA and Virginia Department of, Virginia Department of Environmental Quality. Most facilities need to be permitted. However, we are not, we are not a disposal site nor a storage site, so we are not permitted. It, there is training required to handle hazardous waste. And so just understand that it's regulated. We actually have to handle it from, or the company needs to handle it from cradle to grave and we need a manifest. So when it's disposed of, we ensure that it is disposed of properly. The purpose of the household hazardous waste is it is to keep potentially some dangerous stuff out of the landfill, but it's also for our worker safety. When they put trash in the, in the truck, and this has happened to employees before, when they compact it and somebody puts six quarts of oil in there, then they compact that truck, oil goes everywhere, all over the street, all over the truck, and all over the employee. So keeping this stuff out of the trash is important for, for many, many reasons. We actually contract with a contractor to handle our and dispose of our waste. He will be on site for every single, he and staff will be on site to handle that waste. So we contract for this. It does require the special training, so all the employees on the site do have special training. The city, we handle more of the e-waste and just directing traffic and that kind of stuff. We do have this contractor to handle and dispose of the waste. Our, our, our household hazardous waste is staging only. We are not a storage facility. We could not be permitted as a storage facility. Our, our facilities are not adequate for that. However, they are adequate for staging. So we are good there. And we need to get that, that household hazardous waste off our site as quickly as possible. That has been a challenge in the past to get the company that we contract with to come back in a timely manner. I have just recently set a 30-day, they need to return and get that waste off of our site. We, again, we don't want to store it. We just want to be a staging site for the household hazardous waste. We do offer electronic waste program as well. Again, our, our city employees handle that waste, take it out of people's vehicles. It consists of computers, televisions, printers, the usual stuff. And we actually contract with an e-waste company, electronic waste company. Again, they deliver bins and they dispose of the waste. Again, it needs to have a manifest so that we know that it is disposed of properly. This is a kind of an advertisement. We're actually having our last one this Saturday, October 14th, from 8:00 to noon. And on our website, it shows what you can and cannot, what we can and cannot dispose of. So we want people to be aware of that, but please come out Saturday. And if you've got paint or herbicides or those kind of things, we will welcome those. So it's short and sweet, but I'm, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone? Councilwoman Hugson?
Gayn, the, you had mentioned that, you know, it's not a storage and the contractor doesn't come pick it up, you know, for maybe quite some time. So I'm wondering, you know, when we look at these hazardous wastes, and so if they're hazardous wastes, do we really, when we have an availability for citizens to get rid of that hazardous waste, do we want to tell the citizens to keep that hazardous waste in your garage or your basement for a little longer? Or would it be nice for them to be able to take it out a little more frequently rather than just two times a year from 8:00 to 12:00 on a Saturday that you may not be able to do it? I'm wondering, and especially as you mentioned, that the contractor may not come for quite some period of time. So it's not like there's maybe, if there's a way to not, that's not magical, that it just has to be dropped off between 8:00 and noon on Saturday on October 14th, this new one coming up, and he'd not pick it up for another two months. Is there an availability for, to open it up more for our citizens that can take this hazardous material out of their garages or their sheds or out of their basements that could burn up their house and hurt their kids to be able to bring it and drop it off a little more frequently than just a couple times a year?
We actually have looked at that. It would require certainly a different building than what we have. I have not looked into what it would take for us to be able to store that waste or permit that waste. I, the current facilities that we have would not be sufficient for that.
Or even if we open it up, maybe not necessarily just at any time, but at least open it up a little bit more. If they're not going to come pick it up for another 30 to 60 days and if somebody doesn't, can't, you know, because they're working Saturday from 8:00 to noon and to drop it off the next week or two. It seems like there should be a way, again, not storing it for long periods of time, but if the contractor isn't coming to pick it up for another 30, 60, 90 days, it seems like there could be something either opening up a window as opposed to just a short little four hours, you must be there and if not, good luck. Hopefully, your house doesn't burn down.
I mean, it's something we could definitely look at. We would, I think we would need additional staff and certainly we would need a lot of training. And again, I'm not sure, maybe we could open it up to a 30-day window. I don't know how detailed the, the, the training is. My understanding is pretty in-depth. So I think we'd need to look at that and, and consider it, but it, it's going to be a very different operation and I would need to do a lot more research before I could say that that could work. But I'm, I'd be happy to do so if I'm directed to do so, I'd be happy to do that.
So when somebody drops off their hazardous waste on Saturday from 8:00 to 12:00, there's a specific place they put it, right?
Correct, yes.
So can't there be a specific place to put it on maybe October 20th and put it in that same spot? That doesn't seem like it would warrant having to revamp staff and open up all sorts of things unless there's permitting that I'm not...
Yeah, I think it is, I think it will require permitting and also the reason that we have that company on staff is they're handling, they are trained to handle that waste. So we would need to have them or city employees that would have the proper training, the proper equipment, that can handle that waste to that period of time. I hear what you're saying, it would certainly be more convenient to have a couple of more days. I just, I, we could of course ask the company maybe to extend their days potentially. Maybe we could do a Saturday, Monday, Tuesday, but again, it would be additional cost. It's something we can definitely look at and I'd be happy to do some more research if, if, if that's something people are interested in.
It just, I've heard from a few citizens actually about this that can't make it and so I think it's at that specific time and they're thinking like, well, other places, other localities, they are able to bring it because you want that hazardous waste out of somebody's house and in more of a safe area. And it sounds like it's not maybe necessarily a safe area in the city the way it's set up now, it's just going in some bin or something. So it'd be nice to explore to see, you know, provided it's not something, you know, I recognize sometimes government bureaucracy and the rules that government has to abide by may be different, but it seems like it could be something fairly easy where you open it up and have a little bit more flexibility for citizens. Because this one is October 14th. When was the last one? I think you had another date on there.
It was, it was April, June, and October. It's usually the second Saturday.
Yeah. So three months out of, you know, three different four-hour periods out of the year. And you said, it sounds like lots of people are bringing things, you know, 600, 700 people bringing things. So just, it may warrant exploration is what I would suggest. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Hugson?
I have one question. What, I'm looking at the list of acceptable, non-acceptable and so forth. What, what's the primary thing that you see? Is there, is there something that is like, what is the most common thing that people come to drop off?
Probably motor oil and then non-latex paint that people are trying to get out of their house. We do not accept latex paint, latex paint.
We can dry that out.
We just dry it out, kitty litter, whatever, but that's typically what we receive.
So it's mainly paint and used, used motor oil? You know, because I think of like, you know, when you change your oil in your car, right? I still do that myself. I take my used motor oil to a auto store where you can dump it off and recycle it in the container and you can do that any day that they're open, the ones that accept that and, you know, as long as you're a customer purchasing from those places that they, they offer that service. So I guess the question that I have kind of in line with what Councilman Helgason brought up is if there was something specific, maybe not this whole list, that seems to be the most common thing people are dropping off, would there be the ability to maybe have a way to just drop off those things and then the other things that are a little more, I would imagine, does it have something to do with the hazard class or is that...
Yeah, I believe that you're required to take HazWhopper is one of the classes that you're required to take. And so we would have to take that class and be certified. I don't know if there's additional requirements. Certainly, it's something we could look at, maybe partnering with some local businesses that might be willing to, to partner with us on that, you know, and then maybe we just pay them. I think that, that could be a very good opportunity. I'd be happy to look into that.
Yeah, because I think, you know, if there's something common like that, we might be able to kind of think of some smarter solution to be able to get these things off of people's, you know, out of people's houses quicker.
Right, okay. I'll be happy to look into that.
Question from Roman?
Simple observation, it seems this is something that's utilized to some degree, albeit very infrequently. And yet there are private entities that will take the number one thing that is being deposited. In this case, it would be oil. I worked at Advance Auto Parts for two and a half years, so I know a lot of consistent folks use the same store. You know, I, it's an observation, maybe why do it at all? Saves us resources if it's an easier way to get it to a private industry that is able to take care of it in a more expedient and efficient manner, maybe we shouldn't be doing it.
I've heard people say, and I do not, again, it's just citizens that have talked to me, that a lot of times you have to pay for the disposal. I've heard that with like tires. If you, if you look at your bill and you buy a tire, there's like a $2 disposal fee and people will actually take tires that they are professionally removed from their vehicle and set them out for us to come pick up. So...
And forgive me, I was speaking more towards specifically the, the oil component, but sure, that's fair.
Yeah, so, but I, maybe we could do some education if we can find some businesses that want to partner with us, maybe we could do some education. These are alternatives to, to having to wait. So I will be happy to look into that as well.
I never go in those stores without buying something, so I'm sure they'd probably appreciate, you know, more traffic for people purchasing products.
Good point.
No, I just want to point out that currently you're not charging for this service, right? This is...
That is correct. This is all part of your trash fee and taxes.
So when you come back with any, you know, Councilmember Helgason's request, maybe you could tell us what that increased cost would be to open it up for longer periods of time so we know. Thank you.
Yes.
And then just wanted to think, you know, the, the premise as you outlined was so people aren't tempted to throw the oil in their garbage can. So it's for the safety of the workers. And so now if we have an elongated period going from October all the way to April and meanwhile, something is piling up in someone's, in their home or whatnot, that temptation is going to be a lot more to say, whatever, throwing it in this dumpster or throwing it in some other dumpster. So the, I think the incentive, as you outlined it, was not just for the citizens, but it's also for the safety of the, the workers that are picking up trash, that it doesn't burst all over them, doesn't burst all over the street, doesn't create a hazardous. So the thing is, is it's the incentive to say, get rid of this junk and do it in a fashion that's kind of a little more appropriate procedural way, I think, so.
Be happy to look.
All right, well, thank you very much. Oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Wilder.
Just a quick question. Do we have a method to show when people are doing that, putting it in a trash can? Do we have any kind of review process for that?
Typically, you mean when an...
The person's putting like oil in the trash can?
Our accountability process is if the collector sees it, he will pull it out and set it back and maybe collect the trash. If he runs into a whole cart full of oil, I mean, or half full, he's probably going to leave that and leave a violation. And if it's a problem, then we're going to get in touch with the customer. But we have actually pulled cans of paint, full cans of paint out of someone's trash can and left it so that it was not, it didn't spill all over the road. So the accountability is, is really with the driver. And so unless it probably, unless it happens numerous times, he's probably just going to take care of it and move on.
Because I've, I've seen them leave, one of my neighbors a violation. I know somehow there's some process that they're using to account for that.
Yes.
Thank you. Have you received a lot of requests for additional disposal days through your office?
I have not. I have not received, but, but maybe some people don't know about it.
Thank you, thank you, appreciate it.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, moving on. The next item on our agenda is the Appalachian Power Company easement located at 3525 John Capron Road. Bid opening and acceptance. Ms. Finney, how many bids have been received?
Madam Mayor, as a result of advertisements being used in advance on September 14th, maybe on the 2nd, one bid was received on October 4th from Appalachian Power Company.
Please read the bid.
I have a letter of commitment from Jack Patrick, Senior Right-of-Wave Agent of Appalachian Power Company. Senior Right-of-Wave Agent of Appalachian Power Company. It reads, please accept this letter of commitment on behalf of Appalachian Power Company as a bid being submitted pursuant to the invitation for bids and public hearing advertisement published and news in advance regarding the grant and conveyance of a right-of-way easement upon state Lynchburg-owned property located at 3525 John Capron Road. An original executed acceptance page of the proposed ordinance authorizing the grant and conveyance of such right-of-way and easement accompanies this letter of commitment. And I do in fact have the acceptance letter signed and notarized.
Are there any other additional bids offered? If there are no additional bids, I declare this bidding closed. Is there a motion to accept this sole bid? One second.
One second.
Okay, would you like to speak to it, anyone? No? No? Okay, any discussion? All right, let's go ahead and vote.
The motion passes 7-0.
A public hearing will be conducted tonight at 7:30 to hear from members of the public regarding the adoption of an ordinance granting the easement to the successful bidder. Moving on to our business item briefings. The 12th Street stabilization update and funding. This item will appear before council for action at tonight's 7:30 meeting under General Business, Ms. Donowitz.
Thank you. So City Council selected option two on September 26, 2023, as Ms. Hart gave you options. And this option was to install the high-strength steel mesh pinned-to-slope surface covered with short shot creek so that there would be no maintenance. And that cost was $2,455,000. City Council at that time did request what it would cost to add the color tint. And the cost is roughly $179,000 to make the total cost, cost $2,634,000. Our staff recommendation is to do option two without the color tint. Staff was advised the color tint is going to start to fade after two to three years. So at $179,000, we didn't feel like it was probably worth the cost. Ms. Hart did let me know that the colors would be darker earth tones, but possibly it wouldn't be worth it if it's going to fade in a couple of years anyway. So, but it is at council's discretion. Staff is providing these funding options. The first one is, and what I have on here is up to $2,634,000 because it would either be with the color tint or without. So the most it would be, would be the $2,634,000. We could use $1,634,000 out of the unassigned general fund fund balance, $350,000. We are getting some additional funding for VDOT. So in working with staff, we feel like we could use part of that towards 12th Street reopening. And then $650,000 from the reserve for contingency. Or option two, we can just fund it completely out of the unassigned general fund balance. The funds are there. If council remembers, in our current budget, we do have about almost 12% in our unassigned fund balance. By your rules, we need to have no less than 10% or up to 15%. So there is the option to fund it completely out of fund balance. And then also, at the next Finance Committee, I'll be presenting the end of 2023 where we'll have additional funds fall to fund balance, and I'll go through all of that. But the funds would be available in fund balance. So you've got two options in how you want to fund this. And this is going to vote tonight on the General Business section at tonight's meeting. So that, at council's pleasure, we'll get started on the work. Get the RFP out.
Mr. Bender?
Just point that Ms. Whit made about the timing of this is also, we're trying to move quickly with this. And so that's why the vote this evening, because it takes two. So it would be one on the 10th and then one on the 24th. And because of how November is shaking out with the legislative dinner, it would be not until the end of November again before it would come for you. So that's why the briefing today and the vote this evening, so that we can have it done by the end of October and get to work.
Okay. Counselor Mischin.
I got a question. Would we be able to vote on it now and vote on it again tonight? Or do we have to have a public hearing?
Separate days.
Separate days.
And I'll look to that because I think it's, there's two readings for this.
Right.
Correct. And so the introduction and the adoption have to be separated by a certain number of days.
Okay. Figured I'd ask.
Councilman Helgason?
You know, with this, I don't like option one from the standpoint of using that $650,000 from the reserve for contingencies. That's intentionally kept there. And normally, when that is utilized, that has to be replenished. And typically, how it is replenished is via tax increases. So I don't, I'd like to see that reserve for contingency main whole. With your Resolution B, though, it just says, take all of it from the unassigned fund balance. But it seems like there is some VDOT money that can be utilized. So the VDOT money plus the unassigned general fund balance. But I guess another thought, so combining those two, removing the reserve for contingency, because that's normally up to the Finance Committee to decide how that is going to be spent. So putting that into your option two. But with that, I'm wondering if there's a way to kind of utilize some other funds that were put together in the CIP, like some of that $6 million that was for downtown streetscape beautification, that could be utilized for something that's urgent. Crumbling walls and crumbling, as opposed to beautification project, you know, sidewalks and whatnot. That's, to me, seems like would be more apropos use of the money. Plus, last time we talked, I think Lee Newland mentioned that this would be a fix for a good 20-plus years. 20-plus years means it's long-term. Long-term means it's long-term financed normally. And so if there's a way to utilize some of those bands or use the, I know we got to do it fairly soon, but it seems like it would be, you know, matching the expense with the funding as opposed to using the general fund reserve contingencies. So definitely take that off the table. But if you're using just the general, the unassigned fund balance plus the VDOT money, could be one thing. Or to say, well, we'll use the VDOT money plus maybe a little bit less unassigned fund balance because we have lots of financing and lots of the CIP that's already going for things that are more, in my mind, more beautification as opposed to actually a problem that we had to actually close 12th Street because of an imminent threat of things falling down. Would that be a better, I know it's, I know it's got to be quick. So I'm sure it's, can't just figure that out quickly. Is that anything that could be possibly done?
The line of credit could be used.
But again, then you're pulling that from another project. And that, you know, you got to pay interest on it then until we permanently finance it. So in the end, it's going to cost more than just using cash.
Yeah. So with that, though, I guess we have some other projects that are not financed yet, but they're planned to be financed. And so maybe that could be a way to make the unassigned fund balance whole is by lowering some of those other projects that may not be as imminently essential compared to something that is imminently essential. Just, just my thoughts.
Dr. Wilder?
Which option do you recommend for us to use?
I'm fine with either.
Pardon?
I'm fine with either of these. I probably would take it just all out of fund balance.
Okay. All right, thank you, appreciate it. And I don't really want to take any from the other downtown project, but thank you, I appreciate it.
So why wouldn't you use the VDOT money?
We could, but there's other uses for VDOT money.
Okay, so it's not going away, okay.
Yeah, it's not going away, no.
Thanks.
There's plenty of uses for the VDOT money, yeah.
Yeah, I get it, yeah.
Anyone else? All right, thank you very much. Okay, moving on to roll call. Dr. Wilder.
Just want to remind everyone the EC Glass is having the pink auction, well, not pink auction, pink dinner on Wednesday night. I want to thank Cave On and for the work they've been doing. They raised several hundreds of thousands of dollars for the, I believe, awareness card. Plus, they also give out scholarships. But it's also recognized a person with cancer, especially breast cancer and cancer awareness. So we appreciate the work we're doing in our community. And shout out to the EC Glass football team for that. They have, they're having their dinner on tomorrow. Some of us are going to that as well. I think the pink game is on Friday, I believe. So I just want to commend the students for working with that and also the citizens who are, who are doing that project. Another honoring, Don Giles, I believe, who passed away from cancer, was a great business leader, Warren Giles, in our community. So we're so thankful for that. Also, Desmond Dos recognition is on Friday at 12 o'clock at Monument Terrace, where they do the annual recognition of his, I think, his birth this week. So recognizing that. And also Lighthouse, the beloved community, is having a community land trust awareness program on tomorrow. I believe it's on Zoom at 11 o'clock. So you can contact, contact the Lighthouse if you want more information about that project as well. Community Land Trust is just, again, other resources and looking at home ownership and things of that nature that we can definitely use in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Madoli?
I just want to add to the pink dinner. Because all the entire football team wears pink, and they each have shirts that are sponsored by individuals at the community in honor of someone that has had cancer or has just, you know, so their, their initials are embroidered or something or on the actual T-shirt in the backside. It's just real cool. Thanks.
Councilman Helgason?
I just, since we're talking of sports, yesterday, fantastic, the women's field hockey at Liberty beat the number-one team in the country, UNC, in double overtime. And one of my students scored the winning goal. And saw her this morning as she was taking her exam. And, and it was pretty neat to watch. You know, a lot of times I'm not, I grew up in Minnesota where we had ice hockey. We didn't have field hockey. You couldn't play field hockey because it was frozen over six months of the year. By default, it was ice hockey. Yeah, broom ball as well, we did. But with the field hockey, it was neat watching that winning goal where it was one girl, one Liberty girl, and six UNC defenders and the goalie. And she went backwards, sideways. There's no other Liberty kids, teammates there. And she went over, back around, over sideways, and bam, and scored seven-on-one. I mean, it was neat just to watch that and see that game-winning goal. It was just, I told her this morning, it was like, almost like a David and Goliath. So pretty neat. So that is it.
You don't have anything on, public hearing on harmful regulations?
Oh, that's, since it's on here, I'll mention something. I think when I had brought that up before, I gave that to Alicia back, you know, not sure how our procedures are going to be, if we're going to be able to talk about things. But as I mentioned last time, having, hearing from citizens on the taxes, I think, is important. What we can do to incentivize businesses. Also, the same thing is what can be done? What are some of these harmful regulations? No offense, but we normally hear from what the good regulations are from you folks sitting in front of us. But it's also good from, hearing from people that are out there that are either going to try to build or try to grow the city or try to invest their own capital and say, what is something that could be done that is hampering my ability to develop and build? What's hampering our ability to attract jobs and companies in Lynchburg? May not be any. But I know there's some, such as like the sidewalk-to-nowhere ordinance that we still need to address. Hopefully, that needs to be coming up fairly soon. When somebody wants to build, they have to put, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars in sidewalks next to their property. That doesn't connect anything. So there may be other things. I think it may be a good opportunity for council to say, let's, at some point in the future, have a public hearing where we can hear from folks that are investing capital that think, something that we could do better, things that are hampering their ability to grow and build our tax base.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Mischin?
Yeah, so a couple of things. Jeff, thanks for sharing that story about your student, the field hockey team. I think it's really important to recognize women's sports. And, you know, there's an attack on women's sports right now. We need to, we need to do what we can to protect it. So with that, on to the other thing. I did read the emails that you sent, Mr. Friedman. And I kind of understand that that's probably not something that we can do because of state law. And then also would require a charter change, which would also require legislative action from Richmond. But what I, what I would like to see is, I would like to see it become, and I don't know what the best tool for this would be, whether it's an ordinance or a resolution or whatever. I would like it to become policy of City Council that we don't deliberate the compensation of our appointees in a back room. That if we're going to spend the tax dollars of our citizens, that we do it out in the open and actually have discussions about spending those tax dollars, you know, in public, that we shouldn't be doing that behind closed doors. So I don't know what would be the best tool to do that. But that's, I think, would be important for us to do.
Councilor Tillik?
Yes. I had a customer of mine announce that they are putting the Trading Post in downtown Lynchburg. It's a little grocery store. It's in the old antique automotive showroom there. And they have a lot of space. And they told me that if this go well, they're going to build a bigger grocery store. And they're basically using their funds. And I would love to see the city come alongside them and help them out as much as possible.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Madam Mayor, it was Manufacturing Day, I believe it was this week. And we had an opportunity to celebrate our manufacturers with our state delegation and some of our business leaders. And I thought, I don't think folks really realize how influential our manufacturing community is. Not just like to my calendar, it was last week. And we just took a moment to recognize the impact that they make on our local economy. And it's quite profound. And the amount of diversity from a genre sense, from what our manufacturers produce in this area is quite extraordinary. And I just wanted to recognize them from the day of today. This weekend, we had a really neat event that I just kind of walked through and enjoyed. It was Day at the Point. And I hoped folks who attended had a wonderful time. I do want to commend our city museum for taking the lead and our economic development team for putting on the event. It seemed like it was very well-attended. First time it's been done in a few years. And it certainly was just a great opportunity for the city to come together in some degree on a very special location during a beautiful day and enjoy the autumn weather. And then finally, Councilmember Wilder did mention it, but this Thursday is Desmond T. Dos Day. I hope we all can take a moment on Thursday to recognize the impact he made, not only on our city, but our country, and for standing up what he believed in and still going to heroic places with his service. So, thank you.
Mr. Vice Mayor, you also forgot that Sunday was your birthday. So that was an important day as well. So happy birthday.
Thank you.
Okay. The Moore and Giles Virginia four-and-ten miler was also this past weekend. So congratulations to the organizers and participants of the 49th running of the Virginia 10-miler, four-mile run and four-mile walk events last weekend. More than 3,100 registered runners and walkers from 33 states. That was, no, that was two weekends ago, right? Was it two weekends ago? Yeah, sorry, okay. Participated in the race, supported by more than 900 volunteers representing our area universities, colleges, and churches. Thank you to Moore and Giles for the title sponsor, Bank of the James and Centra, along with 26 corporate sponsors and 22 corporate teams. 52 elite runners representing five countries participated this year with special guest Olympian marathon runner Jared Ward, who traveled to Lynchburg from Berlin, specifically promoting air travel in partnership with the Lynchburg Regional Airport. who traveled to Lynchburg from Berlin, specifically promoting air travel in partnership with the Lynchburg Regional Airport. The women's course record was broken for the third time in four years. Thank you to all who participated and supported this wonderful community event. Save the date for the historic 50th anniversary running in 2024 on Saturday, September 28th. It's also Fire Prevention Week. This week, October 8th through the 14th, is National Fire Prevention Week. And this year's theme is cooking safety. Every year, cooking fires are the leading cause of home fires and fire injuries in the United States. And already this year, there have been 33 house fires in Lynchburg caused by unattended cooking. Our team at the Lynchburg Fire Department urge every citizen to take precautions to prevent a cooking fire in their home. Never leave food cooking on the stove or grill unattended. Turn handles away from the front of the stove so they can't be accidentally tipped over, and keep all your cooking and grilling surfaces clean. Do your part to keep yourself, your family, and your home safe. Economic Development Authority announcement. Recently, Governor Glenn Youngkin announced a $500,000 grant from the Mixed Use on Main Street program to the Economic Development Authority of the City of Lynchburg for the redevelopment of 412th Street. Funds will support the developer, AC Capital LLC, to transform the former A&amp;P Grocery Store at 412th Street into a commercial and residential space. This project, which is currently under construction, is a great example of a public-private partnership to redevelop and reuse space in the city's historic downtown. Congratulations, congratulations to the city's EDA and to AC Capital LLC for its successful redevelopment project. And highlighting Fleet Services Department. The mission of the City of Lynchburg's Fleet Services Department is to provide a safe and reliable fleet that enables outstanding service to our citizens through innovative, sustainable, and cost-effective practices. Their vision is to produce an organization that exceeds common goals and continuously strives to provide outstanding service while becoming the overall number-one fleet in the country. Established in July of 2000, Fleet Services operates in automotive service Excellence Blue Seal Shop with an outstanding team of well-qualified personnel holding a combined 90 national certifications and more than 300 years of experience. They're an award-winning operation with accolades, including NAFAs' number 25 ranking of fleets with the Americas as well as the 2023 number-one midsize fleet in the nation by Government Fleet Magazine. Responsibilities include the acquisition, maintenance, repair, and disposition of nearly 900 city-owned vehicles and equipment ranging from weed eaters to fire trucks. Other duties include policy direction, contract oversight, and the management of the city's fuel sites. The city's fleet drove 4.6 million miles last year, and Fleet Services completed 3,100 work orders and nearly 10,000 hours of maintenance at a rate which is at at least $30 per hour less than the private sector. Over the last few years, Fleet has also added seven fully-electric, 21 hybrid-electric, and numerous flex-fuel vehicles in pursuit of environmental and cost savings for the city. Great job. Okay, we are now, we'll move to go into closed session. Consideration of a closed meeting to discuss the investment of public funds to assist in securing the expansion of our prospective business while where bargaining is involved, where if made publicly, public initially, the financial interests of the city would be adversely affected pursuant to the section 2.2-3711A5 and 2.2-3711A6 of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended. May I have a motion to go into closed meeting? Okay, any discussion? No? Please vote.
The motion passes seven-zero.
All right, we are now enclosed.